... school board meeting of November 25th, 2019, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alicia, will you please do the roll call for us?
Jamie?
Present.
Kevin?
Here.
John is absent at the moment. Jason?
Here.
Myself here, and Donna?
I'm here.
Thank you, Alicia. Announcements, the next school board meeting, the next regular school board meeting will be on Monday, December 9th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Glencoe-Silverlake High School Community Room, 443-444, following the truth and taxation meeting at 6:00 PM in the same location. Acknowledgements?
You know, I do have a few acknowledgements, and I'll just take the time to do those now. Some of them are a part of my report as well, so I'll just do a couple of them. The first acknowledgement that I want to do, since this is the first time that we are back after the vote, is to acknowledge our voters and to say thank you very much for your support of our operating levy here back on November 5th. It was great to see the support, great to see the margin, and just really can't thank the voters enough for approving our operating levy for the next 10 years. So, number one, thank you very much to them. Also want to acknowledge Chandelandis. Chandelandis was named Teacher of the Year for the Arts Educators of Minnesota Association. This is a great honor for her, and so congratulations to her. And then, like I said, I have a couple more that I'll just do in my report, but just want to also just acknowledge a couple of losses that we've had. Kevin Simonson recently passed away, and he was a huge supporter of the GSL school district and the activities department, and he's going to be missed because he has been a mainstay at many of our activities. Special place in the wrestling community and the football community, but not only from those two, but all of the other activities as well, and just want to say thank you. I thought the Chronicle, John, you guys did a great honor of him and well-deserving of that individual. And also want to acknowledge our sympathies to the family, and just another sympathy to the family of Darlene Godell. If you guys remember Darlene from many years ago, mainstay at The Cooks before, way before my time, but then when I got here and, you know, worked a little bit in the activities department and then started here, she was the ticket taker that was here every time, every play, and just a dear, dear, dear wonderful lady. And our sympathies go out to that family as well. I have a few more that I'll do in my report, and we will go from there, so.
I can testify to some of Darlene's cooking. I can tell you that she was one of a kind, and she whipped up some pretty good meals here at Glencoe Schools, so. Another acknowledgement that I'd like to add as well is, last week was American Education Week, and so it's a time for us to kind of just stop and take a breath, and as a board, we'd like to acknowledge everyone that is part of the education of students here at GSL, from administration to 284, to the teachers, to the secretaries, to the district office staff, and each of the services that are contracted out as well. American Education Week is a time to celebrate education, and once again, like I said, it's education of all of our students, and that means from facilities to day-to-day routines and activities. So, like I said, from administration to everyone, thank you very much for all of your contributions, and it's also a time to thank families and students also, because that's why we're here, and that's what we're here to do, whether it's, like I said, facilities, or whether it's greeting people at the door, whether it's taking care of them when they're sick, whether it's feeding them, you name it. The families and the students, we want to acknowledge them during American Education Week as well. So, thank you to everyone that is involved in education in GSL. Any other acknowledgements?
Public input relating to the agenda, first call. Second call, public input relating to the agenda. And third call. Reports and presentations, Dasher and 4.0 grounds, bus transportation. Want to rock, paper, scissors, or? Arm wrestling, maybe a fundraiser here for us? Ooh, those are fighting words.
Brady Flaherty with Dasher Management. For those who don't know him, this is Mike Nelson from Dasher Management. He's the CEO, president, owner, my boss, my boss's boss. Yeah, I don't know what's that. Look at this, she's got pictures. I don't have a report for you guys. It's been kind of canceled the last couple of times, so the last report that I gave you was regard to the facilities and the custodial maintenance and staffing. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Other than that, it's been, you know, it's been a long couple of years, as you know, with the building project and everything else, so just kind of touch on a couple of things here. Shouldn't take any more than, I don't know, 45 minutes or so. But we've got some health and safety stuff coming up. We've had the first one scheduled, we've got the next one coming up here in the middle of December. Nothing has really changed as far as our staffing is concerned. I think we've got a real solid staff right now. I'm real happy with their performance overall. They're not without issue, of course, but neither am I. But there's not a real whole lot new to tell you guys as far as the building projects or the construction projects out in the parking lot. We have yet to figure out how we're going to do the snow here Tuesday night, tomorrow night, Wednesday morning, but we'll figure it out. So, with that said, Mike, do you want to add anything?
I guess I would just say thank you to the board and to the administration for the opportunity to continue working here. We've had a positive relationship for many years now, at least from my part. And again, I'm very proud of the job that Brady and his staff have done. I think we also have an excellent group of people right now that work really hard to do their best for the district, so thank you very much.
I'll just add, we've had a partnership with Dasher here for 15 years, Michelle? 13? 14? Somewhere right around there, and they've been here, and it's been a really good partnership. When we have concerns or issues, we go to them, they address them. It is something that I think we work really well together. Brady has been more of, more than just a custodial leader, so to speak. He has, he brings some expertise, which has been really a wonderful asset to the district on many HVAC stuff and just some background knowledge that it's nice to have somebody on staff or onsite that has some of that stuff that you need. And so, he was, he played a big role in our building project, played a big role in our parking lot project, and he represents Dasher very, very well. So, thank you guys for your work.
My pleasure. I'm not allowed to drive them, so.
I know that.
That's probably why they are working.
Yes. Ron made that very clear. No, we're done. Yep, no, they're actually both operational and topped off and ready to go for Tuesday, so yeah. We're golden there, so. Dean, I see you make it. Dean, you got any questions while I'm standing here? Good. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great night.
Yep, you as well.
If I don't talk to you guys, have a good Thanksgiving.
Thanks, you too.
4.0 grounds and bus transportation.
Evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here. So, my name's Bill Drummer, Assistant General Manager with 4.0 School Services. This is Tina Tubert with me tonight. She's the manager here in Glencoe. Tina comes to us, so she's been with us for a number of years. She's got a little history of 4.0, and as of last spring, she did step into the manager role here for us, and she's done a fantastic job so far. She comes as a part of your community. She's got a great knowledge of the community in the area and a great relationship with the drivers here, too. And she's even been able to add a few new faces to our driver pool, so that's a huge relief for us at 4.0 and I'm sure for you guys here with the school district, so. Here we are with a little bit of change in seasons. I think we've had a fantastic start to the school year so far, coming through the fall, and now we're faced with the winter time. And with the winter time change comes a little change of pace, too, and with that, you know, we always appreciate the great communication between the school district, the school administration, and us, and we hope to continue that. And, you know, our goal is always to provide safe and reliable transportation for our students and for our school district, and with the communication and the working relationship we have with you guys and Tina's leadership skills, I think we can achieve those goals, so.
I'll once again kind of make a couple of the similar comments. You know, our subcontractors in a whole have all been very, very good. 4.0 is no exception, not only just for you guys' knowledge, too. 4.0 not only does our transportation, but they also do our grounds during the course of the summer and fall and spring. But working with them has been very smooth. If there's ever concerns or issues, we work together on those things, and they've been, once again, a wonderful partner here for, I think this has been 14 years as well, isn't it, Michelle? So, thank you. They've had some change a little bit over the years in terms of their leadership, but every single one of them has stepped up. I get to speak with Tina early in the morning, and we get to have conversations, and it's been, like I said, a really good partnership, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night and a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Administrators and committee reports, business managers report. Michelle, would you like to kick it off?
There. Now we're on. All right, I only have a couple of things to mention, because you'll hear a lot from me in December with the truth and taxation, so I've been working on that material and information to get that ready to go for the truth and taxation hearing. Election, as Chris mentioned, we very happy with the results of the election and the support from our community. We will be tallying a total election cost spreadsheet for you. We don't have all those costs available yet, but I know everybody kind of says, "How much does it cost to run an election?" So, we'll be putting that together as soon as we have all our bills in, and I'll get that sent out to you. Other than that, we have made a couple of curriculum purchases. We've talked about this in the past, so we kind of put a number of things on hold until we kind of got through the audit, got some of the construction bills paid. So, we have now moved ahead with a couple purchases to finish off the language arts curriculum, some Spanish curriculum, and some EL equipment. So, it helps the staff that have been patiently waiting for some of that curriculum, so it was nice to make those purchases, and I think the Spanish material just arrived today, and that was now delivered to the staff there, along with the EL material for the Lakeside Building. So, we've gone ahead with those purchases, and we'll continue to look at those and those capital items that we've kind of put on hold as kind of the year goes through. So, that's about all I have for tonight. Any questions that you might have for me?
Do you remember, is the next review cycle for the curriculum math?
Yes, it is. They kind of have started on that.
The review?
Yeah, the review.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And what else came up? Social. We have online subscription at the junior high level that they use that does expire this next year, so there's going to be a little bit of discussion on social, so. But they have started on the math.
Principal reports.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, everyone. I'll touch on some of the highlights in the written report that you have in front of you. You know, we're continuing to work with our leadership teams and our staff as a whole on culturally responsive teaching in the brain, and just something that has struck all of us, teachers and Joy and I, is, you know, there's been a change. We, if you've been involved in schools, you've probably heard about the culture of poverty, and it made me think about how some things, you know, can be considered best practice at one time, and then another time it's not, because now we're reading that it certainly doesn't fit the definition of culture, that if you're in poverty, those are coping strategies that you need to survive. And that's something I can really, I can relate to that, and I think the staff has embraced this, that definition of poverty versus that it's a embedded culture. We're seemingly endless, so. That's been one strong takeaway from both of our teams at Lincoln and Lakeside. If you look down a little bit for our all-school meetings, the Lincoln superhero mission will be pizza and painting in early December. Lakeside went to the Mall of America, and classroom lessons have focused on responsibility in November. Down on the bottom, you can see we are looking at reviewing math. We're going to be deciding on tools to review later in tries two and three this year. I'll go on to the back. Under title three, I did put three copies of our English Language Development Plan of Service. Wanted to acknowledge our EL team. They worked on November 11th to update the plan of service. That is the old plan, that is not the new one, but that would be Sarah Swanland, Jamie Ronholm, Ann Taylor, and Sarah Beckman. So, I appreciate the work they did on 11/11. And under special education, we are in the midst of a self-review of our files with the cooperative's guidance. And on the bottom, you can read school community partnership and acknowledgements. We had a great time at Newsies. Amazing to work with Kay Wilson, and I appreciate her help in getting us there and helping us with all those logistics involved with five, six, and seven-year-olds. Finally, under acknowledgements, really appreciate the elementary staff members who wrote a Stevens Seminary grant. I'll point out Teresa Keister wrote a grant for some morning games for our morning gym time at Lincoln. Heather brought the Science Museum of Minnesota to Lincoln, and Josh Metcalf purchased about a dozen scooters. Number one, so we can play Mario Kart with our kids in Fayette, and number two, we no longer have to borrow from Waconia, so we can be a lot more efficient. So, I obviously appreciate Stevens Seminary and the opportunity to apply for those, but the effort that our staff members put in to write those. What questions do you have?
I just have one comment. I was at the dress rehearsal at Newsies when your students were there, and I just want to commend you and your staff. They were, I mean, you were talking two hours and 20 minutes that they were asked to sit there, and they didn't start fidgeting, however you prepared them, or however Mrs. Wilson prepared them, with giving them kind of a background beforehand.
Sure.
But they were absolutely phenomenal. So, my hats off, and would you please share with your staff.
I will, and I appreciate hearing that. Thank you, John. Thank you.
Good evening. Mine's going to be pretty brief tonight. I'm going to talk just a few things about school improvement and school and community partnerships, which I do each meeting here, but some of the things I wanted to focus more on were the acknowledgements for tonight. Chris kind of spoke about one already with Chandelandis and the Art Educator of the Year Award, but I did want to draw attention to that one more time. With school improvement, at the 712, we've really been working on ACEs or Adverse Childhood Experiences this year. We talked about relationship-based education in workshop week before school started, and then in our last workshop day that we had, we watched a Paper Tigers documentary, which talked about these adverse experiences in a childhood and kind of how they affect you as you grow older. We look to continue that on our March 2nd workshop here coming up next year. PBIS committee is still going strong. This is the first year where we are on our own. The first two years, we would go to meetings about once every two months to sustain. This is the first year where we are working on our own, and it is going well. We're still continuing to implement our 712 behavior matrix for our students. We did have our Student Spotlight Awards today, which are based off that matrix, and it went very well. Our next one will be, I believe, December 16th, and I talked about it a little bit further down. We still meet as a solution-focused team twice a month and a student assistance team twice a month. This is where we identify students who are struggling, whether it be emotional or academically, and set them up for interventions. If the interventions don't work, then we move them to the child find process or the SPED process for testing. We are active with our high school and junior high leadership teams still. They meet twice a month. We talked about the Pride Spotlight Awards for December. School community partnerships, we are doing the high school and junior high connection map this year. Junior high is new. In the past, it's only been high school. We are still doing our Hispanic outreach program, and Bill just mentioned the Stevens Seminary grant and thanking those that wrote that. The Hispanic outreach program or our cultural liaison program started as a Stevens Seminary grant, and this year it has now become part of our, it's a contracted position, if I believe. So, that's kind of the idea behind those grants, is that we initially get the money to see if they work, and the cultural liaison program has, and it's been a big asset for us at the 712, and I know it has been at the K6 level as well. We're still doing our Olvea's Anti-Bullying Program. We have a lesson once a month that we meet with the students, and the PBIS team has put together PBIS lessons this year. And in an effort to not bite off more than we can chew, we have lessons about once every two months, and these lessons coincide with our Olvea's Anti-Bullying Program, and they're all, they're on YouTube, so the students watch them and they're rap, and there's questions that go along with it. So, so far, they've had one. They'll have another one that's coming up here before Christmas break where they watch, and it just talks about our expectations at the 712 setting. The last thing I wanted to talk about with the community partnerships is our lift grants. We currently have three lift grants that are active at the high school. We have our coding class, which will go all year long, and that's first hour. That's the one that Richard Smith wrote, and is a junior high computer coding class. We partner with Sibley East. The second one we have is our food truck. We do currently have the food truck. It is Brady left, but I believe that'll be parked in our auto shop for the winter, so I'm guessing tomorrow that'll be put in our auto shop before the snow comes. And we're looking at getting an early start with that this spring to try it at like softball games or sporting events. Again, we'll be using Stevens Seminary. I think we're going to try and do a grant just to dabble with it a little bit this spring. Next fall, the food truck will be a full-fledged course for our high school students to register for, and it'll be known as Culinary Entrepreneurship. And then the last lift grant, which is a new one, sorry, I need to go back. Kristen Dane wrote the food truck lift grant. The last one, and the most recent one that we were awarded, Kristen Dane also wrote, and it's for CPR and first aid. We partnered with Litchfield, and they're actually the fiscal host, so Michelle, I think, is appreciative of that. But we were able to use the money to buy pretty new, well, actually, they're brand-new, but CPR dummies, and of this course, our students are able to take it and become CPR certified. Kristen Dane will be offering that in her infants course here moving forward for this school year. I believe infant starts for her try two. Onto the acknowledgements on the bottom. I know it was mentioned already, but Newsies, the fall musical, just finished. It was fantastic. So, thanks to the staff and the cast for putting on another great show. Our Veterans Day program was a few weeks ago, so thanks to Mr. Lemke again for organizing that. And then on the back, I do want to draw some special recognition to the 3M Hutchinson location and then Corey Groot. Last week, 3M Hutchinson donated an email to our ag shop here in school. And I'd also like to thank John Lemke. John took time out of his day to come with a forklift to help get us unloaded, but Corey really is the one that kind of spearheaded that, and Jamie also even as well, to work with getting used equipment from 3M, but new to us and very, in much better condition than what we have. So, now our metal shop has two knee mills. They're both Bridgeports. They're going to be worked into our curriculum next year in our welding and hopefully a metals course. And this has kind of ignited an excitement for me. Last week, Superintendent Sanju and I and Assistant Principal Saboda went to a meeting in New Ulm, where I got the chance to visit with Fairmont Superintendent Joe Brown, and just kind of the exciting things that they've done in Fairmont with partnering in the community and partnering with some manufacturing corporations and what they offer out of their CTE department. So, right now, I'm in the process of getting together a lift grant for the area of welding. I'm also looking at putting together a lift grant for equipment to bring a metals course back to GSL. And then I'm going to look at a third lift grant, which might be biting off a lot more than I can chew, but in the field of woods and having an after-school woods course for both the community and students that would be for high school credit for our high school students. So, just very appreciative of Corey, very appreciative of 3M, and I really see great things coming to GSL and our ag department because of this. So, thank you, Jamie, thank you, John, and thank you, Corey, for that. And then, lastly, again, we talked about before, but it is a big deal, and I'm super proud of Chandelandis. Superintendent Sanju and I had the opportunity to go down, and we're at that award ceremony where she was given this award, and what I thought was extra special for her as well was that she was presented the award by her daughter and Andrea Wiggern. So, any questions for me?
One quick one, Matt. For the lift grants, can you refresh my memory, is that available to just junior high secondary, or is it anything available to elementary for lift grants? I can't remember what the parameters were, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you know if there are?
It has to be in the area of a career tech education. So, if you're going to write a lift grant, you have to have a licensed educator that you can use their CTE license for. So, for example, Richard Smith is not a CTE instructor. However, he partnered with our business department, which is a field in the career tech ed, to bring coding here. And since he talks with that business teacher, and actually, the individual that's teaching it at Sibley East has a CTE license as well, that's how they're able to bring the lift grant in. As far as K6, I don't know that you couldn't do a lift grant, however, I don't know how that would work in the area of CTE at a K6 setting.
Yeah.
You can. It's just got to.
It's got to fit, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Superintendent Report.
I'll try to be brief, but I do have a couple of things. You guys heard a lot about Stevens Seminary, and I think I've reported on this in the past. You guys know where that dollars come. Every year, I meet with Stevens Seminary during the summer, and we talk a little bit about the needs of the school district and how they support us. And this was several years ago, about when we decided to do this initiative fund to get things looking outside of the box. And so, that's where these dollars, and thankfully, they've just kept supporting it year after year after year. And so, they obviously are a huge supporter of GSL, and they're the ones that allow us to do some of these things that they've talked about. And so, just want to give you a quick little background information on that. And then also, just, you know, to, I think I've mentioned this before, too, about the presentations that we've had and getting people out. I know it's very quick, but I think it's important for you guys to be able to see the people that, and meet the people that we work. So, you know, I really appreciate, the reason I'm saying this is I appreciate, they came a long ways for 30 seconds, but I think it's important for them to be in front of the board so that you can see who we're actually working with from our subcontracted people. So, thank you to them for coming in. A couple of other things, another acknowledgement, Kendall Guerrero and Connor Holloway, they both ran in the state cross-country meet, which is an exciting thing that we had representation in there. We are currently having a big food drive that's going on, and that will be ending here tomorrow, and we'll be bringing that over. And the food drive, or the food shelf here in McLeod County looks forward to this, and I work with them in getting this, and they actually kind of count on it. And so, we do it kind of on purpose during this time of the year because they need the food. I also want to say thank you. I know Jamie mentioned a little bit about American Education Week, but the Silverlake Women's Club puts on tea, and because of American Education Week, and so, the staff at Lakeside and Michelle and I went up there to say thank you and enjoyed a little bit of tea and treats and things like that as them, once again, supporting the school district. Very nice of them. And then, finally, I know that, you know, I mentioned a couple of other sad things, but I want to also say sympathies out to Kathy Lindbeck, who is a paraprofessional here, and the loss of her son. And one of the other things that I want to mention that our staff does is that they, the staff contributes to a sunshine fund, and many staff members bring in dollars so that we, as a school district, can go ahead and send plants, flowers, those types of things for when those situation happens, so that we, as a school district, can be represented there. And I think it's an important thing, and I just want to say thank you to our staff, and because those situations come up, and, you know, as we're trying to keep building this family, it's important to... as, as we're trying to keep building this family, it's important to, to, to support family. And, and our staff does support that very well. So any questions for me?
Does Silver Lake Women's Group, they make donations to the Lakeside Library?
That is correct. Oh, and, and I forgot to mention Reggie Dobbs was here on Thursday of last week. And, and he's a motivational speaker. And our students got a chance to see him and, and not only hear his words, but listen to him perform and did four presentations during the school day and then did a fifth one for the community at night. And so grateful for him coming and sending his message.
And did you notice the Silver Lake ladies' little unsaid, you know, their little unsaid competition that they have with regard to the bars and the treats and stuff and kind of holding back and watching to see which ones are taken first and kind of that little rivalry? Did you happen to notice that this year?
Well, I think I took one of each when I went through, so.
You can't go wrong. You can't go wrong that way. That's, that's good. That's very good. Any other questions or comments? All right. Committee reports. Any committee reports? Okay. Hearing none. Approve the agenda action item. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I'll make that motion. Is there a second? I have a motion by Jamie and a second by Kevin to approve the agenda. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Approve consent agenda action item enclosure number one. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by Kevin and a second by Alicia to approve the consent agenda. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Old Business, item A, job descriptions, action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the updated job description for social worker, cultural liaison, Panther Pals, chess club advisor and interpreter. Is there a motion? Is there a second? I have a motion by John and a second by Jason to approve the updated job descriptions. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, approval of contract, action item enclosure number two. Community education contract for Matt Munchow needs to be amended to reflect his title of community education coordinator, Panther Fieldhouse Director. Superintendent Sanju recommends the approval of the amended contract. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion with the one change. I would like to see this as a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Okay. I have a motion by Jason and a second by Alicia to approve the amended contract with Matt Munchow as a roll call vote. Questions, comments, discussion?
This, this contract goes from, what was it, August something to June 30th of 2020, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you able to find out if there's any of the school districts around that are able to, we are able to use their licensure?
Yes. Norwood would be willing to help us out. Sibley East would be able to help us out.
And you talked to them and they said they're okay with it?
Yep. Yep. In fact, you know, like I said earlier, Norwood, their person had done this before for Waconia here several years ago. And then Sibley East, they actually had the person that is their community education director now, had somebody that fulfilled that role for them while they waited for their license.
And did they give you an indication as to how much they would charge us for that?
No. No. We haven't talked any contract from that. I would wait for direction from you guys.
So that would come before us as a recommendation as to who to pair with and at what level and at what dollar amount? Is, is that how you see it?
You tell me. I'm, I'm fine with, you know, trying to work something out. I know when I talk to both of them, you know, they're both just willing to help. You know what I mean? So I don't know if you want me to go get the best deal or, you know what I mean? They're just, hey, I get it. Just you let me know where you want to go and, and help out. And.
I think what I, what I'd like to see, I think, is for you to gather that information from each of those entities or others to bring forth a recommendation of who to pair with and at what level of, of service, what, what expectations we would have with whichever entity we would go with. You know, what that responsibility would be that we're asking for from them. And like I said, at what level and at what dollar amount, what cost?
I agree. But I, also, I would like to ask that we get ahold of the Board of School Administrators. If they would have granted us the variance that we asked for, we wouldn't have to be worrying about this. They don't get scared. Okay. Okay, it's on. So they should have, I think they should give us a reason as to why they said, don't bother applying because it won't be granted. And if, if we don't have a reason, I, I don't think it's right. And so if we don't get a variance, then if we don't hire somebody, you know, if, if things are in, in the, at the end of June, if things don't work out, if we need to have another person, or if somebody, you know, if other director comes back, then it won't be an issue. But if she doesn't, then it will be an issue. And then if we don't have somebody with a license, we're going to be asking for a variance again. And if they're not going to grant us the variance, I think they need to let us know why they're not doing that. And so as a board, if we have to, as a board, draft a letter and say that we would, we would appreciate the reason as to why they would not grant the variance, I, I would support that.
You know, I, I get what you're saying, Kevin. But, you know, we, we actually called on a speech pathologist this year and said, hey, can we get a variance for a person that was interested? And, you know, they kind of looked at us and said, that person's not going to have enough boxes checked basically to get it. So we didn't even bother applying with it. So it's, it's not like we haven't done that before. You know what I mean?
And I'm not saying that you, I, I just think that they need to, they need to give us a reason and, and have it written down and say, this is why. Because otherwise, it's just somebody saying, well.
Well, and, and then it, you know, like the board administration told me is if you don't get a variance, you can then do what we're planning on hopefully doing here next month to cover yourself. And, and that's something that has been done. So there's another fulfillment of how to fulfill your licensure requirement. Either one is fine. You're, you're fulfilling your, your, your licensing requirement. And we're good.
It just sounds like, to me, it sounds like there, it's a cop out from them saying, don't bother. Try something else.
I don't think so because of the fact that they just, you know, just doesn't have enough boxes checked, you know? And, and once you get, you know, you need to be like in programs and have some of those types of things to be able to qualify for variances. But you can always apply.
But in their, in their communication with us, they've never communicated to us what boxes were not checked. I mean, or, or.
The big one is the programming. And I know Matt isn't getting involved in that programming right now. So, but that's the biggest one. You're not in the program. You're not in the, you know, the, the, the program to get licensed. And that's, that's the big thing. And even when we, you know, when we checked on the speech pathologist, that was the other thing is you're, you're not in the program. Yep. You, you have education. You have degrees. But you don't have those things. And so that's one of the biggest things that they look for in terms of getting variances is that if you have, you know, being in that program. So that will help.
This is what I'd like to know is if they have any type of an outline, because like you had made the comment before, we've gotten variances for other positions before. Well, then why, and, you know, if that was so easy back then or to those other positions, why was this one so difficult? I think is what we're wanting to know. Do they have some type of an outline for each position that a person can go online and look up so that we know these things ahead of time? Or I, basically, is it just a shot in the dark? Do you just call them and say, can we do this? Yes or no? I mean, that's, that would be nice to know because I would like to be able to even find that information out for certain positions. You know, it makes, makes our job a little bit easier when it comes to making decisions like we had to make. You know, if I could find out what their outline is per position, you know, if I'm looking for, to fill up a specific position, can I go online and look up what their outline, what the person's, what the criteria has to, the person's criteria has to have? And I just, I don't know if that's, if they have that or not. But it would be helpful, I think.
Maybe, you know, especially if we're needing to go for hiring of individuals that aren't licensed and we have to find more individuals that may need variances. If we can find out what those boxes are, and if, if we know those ahead of time, then we can maybe adjust our hiring accordingly, I think is what I'm hearing people say. Any other questions or comments?
So just the, the name change for the contract, you know, we're going from director to education or community director to coordinator. That was a recommendation just from our legal counsel to do that. And it was also from that board, from Bosa? Was it a recommendation from that or they just said we could do that?
They, you know, their, their answer is if you don't find somebody that's licensed, you have two things. You can go through the variance process or you can go through the, the process of hiring an individual and, you know, that would oversee the program. And, you know, according to them, they said you could hire that person for one day if you wanted to. You just got to have that. And in theory, you, you could argue that we don't even need to do that right now because.
We technically have a licensed person on staff.
Correct.
Correct.
But, you know, to, to do the, you know, to, to do the, the overseeing of the program, you know, that was her recommendation to, to do. And so that's why I'm bringing it forward with, with, with you tonight.
Okay.
So can the licensed person that we have on staff sign off on the work that the coordinator would do, even, even though the individual's?
Correct. And really, the only thing that is needed to be done is their state report where there's a sign off. And we already done, did the report. We told them that the, the director is on leave and MDE told us to have me sign it. And they didn't.
So could you, Chris, could you sign, do we have to have like Norwood or Sibley East? Or could you just sign any other? Or is that just something they tried to steer you away from? Or?
No, I, I mean, they're, they're just saying that you should have a licensed person on staff is what they're saying. You know, with our situation that we have, you know, it's a year long. I think we're fine. But if we wanted to have something long-term. But again, it, it, we're, we're doing it right.
From a dollars and cents standpoint, are we, kind of to Kevin's question, can we not have a, an outside entity do whatever they would do if, if the main state report is done and signed off on? You know, once again, what would this entity sort of do for us other than, you know, whether it be a day or whether it be whatever? If, if it's not necessarily needed for five more months, then why spend those dollars and cents?
This is just, you know, I'm listening to the advice of the attorney that says, you know, to, but technically, I asked her that question. Technically, are we covered? And, and her answer was yes. But is it a good thing to, to do to oversee? Yep. It allows Matt to have a mentor, which I think is a good thing. I think we can do it for pretty minimal dollars. And I think it's dollars well spent. We spend dollars on mentoring programs in our school. I think they're, they're dollars well spent. And having those, that connection, I think, is a, is a good thing. Plus it, you know, like I said, then it fulfills the licensing requirement, even though I think we're already fulfilling the licensing requirement.
Yeah, it kind of sounds that way since we have a licensed person, you know, on staff that we still have as an employee.
We're making a good faith effort of, of trying to, to do that. So.
So yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess if, if we don't need to spend those dollars for anything, I think that would be nice to save those.
I'm just going by the, the recommendation of the attorney. And I've shared that with you.
Which is to change the title.
Change the title and then hire a part-time person to fulfill the licensing requirement, even though we're fulfilling it.
This agenda B only pertains to changing the title?
Just amending his contract. Yes.
Do we need to have a job description that matches this title? Because isn't it, doesn't it kind of not make sense to have a title or a position without a job description?
I do have one created.
Okay. I, I don't know if, and, and I'm not trying to be, you know, putting up obstacles. But I mean, my point being that if we approve a title change without the job description, I don't know that that makes sense.
When we sent it out originally, when we first sent out the job description, it was included?
I thought it was.
The job description is exactly the same as if it was a director because he's responsible for exactly the same duty. You know, it only said, the change is coordinator instead of director.
Yep.
But he's still called the Fieldhouse Director.
Did, did we approve it in October?
No, you didn't approve it because you made the motion to bring these back because you wanted another 30 days to go through the job descriptions. We didn't include that in item A until we got addressed item B. But you did receive it earlier. But he's required right now, we're asking Matt to do the exact same things as if he was a director or coordinator who's responsible for overseeing that facility. We can certainly rescind that too. But again, we kind of needed to get this first.
No, I, I remember seeing it. And, and, and that isn't, that isn't, I guess, my question. My question is, to Kevin's point, we just haven't moved on it. We haven't, we haven't taken action on it. I guess that was my point. So yes, it was, it was sent or, or whatever, but it was never acted upon. You know, it wasn't part of the job descriptions listed tonight or last time either. So that's, that's, I guess, kind of my question of, did anything change in the job description that hasn't yet been approved? But I don't know. You know, like I said, it could be a chicken or egg for that matter. But in my mind, it just makes sense to have a job description, a job created, and then you can put somebody into it. So we can, we can amend the motion if you'd want to address that. Or, or others maybe don't.
You couldn't include the job description change with this same motion?
Correct. Yeah. Correct. I mean, and so if, if you want to do that, if, if that makes sense or not, it's up to the board. And that, that position or that job title would also expire on June 30th of 2020. It wouldn't be an ongoing job description that we would, or a position that we would have. The, the job description goes away when the contract expires.
But we usually retain job descriptions. They're not always all filled. So we've got the job description developed. We might not use. We might not use that, we might not fill that job position. We would go back to the job description, which is identical to this one, that says, um, community ed director.
Yep. Okay.
We don't really expire job descriptions.
Okay.
You know, we amend them, we change them, but you know, they're, they're kept on file.
Okay.
So we have one, so if we posted, you know, the position, or we posted the coordinator, or we posted for a director, we've got the job description.
Sure. I, I guess, I just don't want to see another position added, or another coordinator added, under a director of community education at any point. Not without additional discussion, or, or things like that. Any other questions or concerns?
I made the motion, and, uh, I will amend it to include the job description. And I think that's all I'm going to say. We know, just to include it in the mo, in the motion. Do we need anything else? No? Okay.
Alicia, you're okay with a second yet?
Yes.
Okay. Are you wanting that to be a regular, or a roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. I have a motion by Jason, and a second by Alicia, to approve and amend the contract with Matt Munchow, to make the change in title, as well as the, um, job description of community education coordinator, Panther Field House Director. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote. Um, Alicia, you want to help with that?
Sure. Jamie?
Four.
Kevin?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
John?
Four.
Myself, four. And Donna?
Four.
Okay. And then, um, did you still need some additional direction as to what we would like to see as a board, with regard to wanting to do a partnership, or not a partnership, with other entities around us?
I think I know. I think I got a pretty good idea what you need.
Okay, to bring back to us?
Mm-hmm. Hopefully, I'll get that done before December. I don't know.
Okay.
Quick turnaround because of our two-week delay here.
That's all right. We have till June or July.
And I know that, um, you know, all of this, you know, just want to say thank you. Um, and I know that part of it isn't about Matt, but Matt's been phenomenal. Just so that you guys know, that the day-to-day operations of what's happening are, are going, and, and serving our public, and working with our activities director. Um, I think it's important that, uh, that he's acknowledged that he's coming into a tough spot, and, and is doing just an outstanding job of work, so, um, thank you.
Well, and I'll echo that. I'm glad that you're here tonight, Matt, because as this position has always been talked about the past months and weeks and so forth, it's always been, truthfully, from what I've heard here on the board, about the position, and it has never been about you, or your performance at any time, as a board, when we've been doing the discussions about the position, and how to make it work for the district, and so on. So I'm glad that you're here, so that I, as well as the board, can say it directly to you, um, that the discussions have always been about it, meaning the position, and it has never been about you at all. There's never been any doubt in our minds, as far as you as an individual. So thank you for being here, and thank you for the work that you've started to do, and will continue to do throughout your contract. So thank you.
And I will also, uh, with what Jamie and Chris have both said, and I've heard nothing but, but positive things from people in the community about, uh, programs that are going on. And so, yeah, it's never, ever been about you as a person. It's always been about the position, and making sure that it doesn't, you know, something else doesn't get out of control. So, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. New business. Item A, approval of Education Minnesota GSL seniority list. Action item, enclosure number three. Enclosed is the Education Minnesota GSL seniority list. Following the required posting for 20 days, receipt and verification of challenges, if any, and subsequent changes in the seniority list, if any, the administration recommends adoption of the enclosed Education Minnesota GSL seniority list for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Donna, and a second by Kevin, to adopt the Education Minnesota GSL seniority list for the 2019-2020 school year. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, approval of SEIU Local 284 seniority list. Action item, enclosure number four. Enclosed is the seniority list for employees of Local 284. Following the required posting for 20 days, receipt and verification of challenges, if any, and subsequent changes in seniority list, if any, the administration recommends adoption of Local 284 seniority list for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments? I have a motion by Kevin, and a second by Jason, to adopt the SEIU Local 284 seniority list for the 2019-2020 school year. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, approve audit. Action item. Mary Reed, our auditor from Clifton Larson Allen LLP, provided an overview of the audit summary and financial statements for the school district for the 2018-2019 school year at the October 14th board meeting. The superintendent of schools recommends the board accept the audit summary and financial statements for the 2018-2019 school year, as prepared by Clifton Allen, excuse me, Clifton Larson Allen LLP. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Questions or comments? I have a motion by John, and a second by Donna, to accept the audit summary and financial statements for the 2018-2019 school year, as prepared by Clifton Larson Allen LLP. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item D, annual resolution for combined polling places. Due to change of Minnesota Statute 205A Point 11 Subdivision 2, effective July 1st, 2017, this resolution must be completed by December 31st of each year. Exception to this year because of the presidential primary in March. The resolution is due to the county auditor by December 4th. It's an action item. It's enclosure number five. Questions or com, let me, let me see. Is there a motion?
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Jason. Okay. Um, questions or comments?
Basically, this is a part of the election process. We are not having an election.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay? So we have to do this every year?
Just got a question. Um, did they have the polling? I stopped there, dropped my daughter off before seven, she was dead man. I had five people, I stopped here, but I kind of was asleep. So I stopped, I got a soda, a pop, and I got jumped by about two people. They had, they tried to vote at seven, they thought it was not a trap. And I was curious on, has it always been 10 o'clock? You know, does it, during a general election, do the polls open at 10?
It, it varies by precinct. So some of your townships, when, during a general election, they still won't open till 10. It goes by the size of your precinct. We, as a school district, because of our size, we're allowed to, um, start at 10. Now, if you look at JFW's election that they'd had, they didn't start till noon. Um, I think Hutch's, they started at seven or eight. So it goes by the size. So we were allowed to start at 10. You start earlier, you have more cost incurred, because you're paying your judges longer. So the board, you know, last year decided, you know, starting at 10. And we had some that showed up at the polling place, too, at nine o'clock, and then they grumbled a little bit, and, you know, you, you deal with it as you get to it. So like Chris mentioned, for next year, this is really a mute point for us, because we won't be having another election. Even if we'd have a situation where you'd have to, um, all of a sudden, fill a board vacancy, for example, like this is coming up with Lester Prairie, they have to hold another special election in February to fill a position, a vacant position. Because of the timing and the laws, even if that would happen in this case, we wouldn't have to hold a special election. We have enough days that it would just be determined at the next general election. So it's always a timing thing of when you have to hold a special election, versus putting it on the next year's ballot. Um, so we're okay. So you could decide, you know, when we do this again next year, you know, um, again, we don't plan to have another election for a while, but you could say, well, let's vote from eight to eight, have a 12-hour shift. So, but that's the reason, it goes by the, the size. And there's just people that are used to going to the polls at seven o'clock, or eight o'clock, and, and they don't read, they don't read.
And I'm not trying to second-guess you, I just try to educate myself.
Yep. So you know. Yep.
I have a conversation.
Right. Yep. So yeah, we had, we had some that showed up. We had a couple that called, but, you know, they came back.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion by Alicia, and a second by Jason, to designate the Glencoe City Center as a combined polling place and setting the voting hours between the hours of 10 a.m. and 8 p.m. A roll call will be taken. Alicia, will you please help with that?
Jamie?
Four.
Kevin?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
John?
Four.
Myself, four. And Donna?
Four.
Thank you, Alicia. Item E, resolution appointing a responsible authority. Action item, enclosure number six. Resolution for appointing responsible authority to Superintendent Chris Sanju and Business Manager Michelle Sander, to enter into contractual agreements on behalf of the school, and take all actions necessary to assure that all programs, administrative procedures, and forms used complies with Minnesota statutes. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
So basically, this is something that is different than the Iowa. If you remember, uh, you guys just gave us that authority here a little while ago, and this all came up because, um, one of our school counselors was applying for a grant, and so they're working with the Department of Education. And so they needed to give you board minutes to say, hey, can Mr. Sanju sign off on this? So we sent them the board minutes of the Iowa, and they said, no, that's not it. That's not what we're looking for. What are you looking for? And so they basically say, we need to have, uh, a board action item like this, and we'll be able to send the minutes to them, to show that you have approved myself and Michelle to enter into these contractual agreements. And that, for this particular example, it's, it's for a, 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 a grant. If you don't do this, you will be seeing all these things come to your attention, on that. So, you know, you're allowing me to just take care of this for you. Uh, the other thing that it came into place is, is that we had, uh, a person that gave some dollars to the school district, and they're looking for this authority, um, and they're looking for the same thing, in order for us to be able to fill out the, the application for the beneficiary, so that we can get the dollars after a, a person passed away. And so this also does that. Um, I asked other superintendents, and they said, we generally do that during the first part of, of January. So then we looked through the motions, and said, are we missing something in, in January? During the organizational meeting, which by the way, is coming up very quickly, um, you know, doing this. And so we put together a draft, uh, it's enclosed, we sent it to MDE, and said, is this what you're looking for? She said, yes. And we are good to go. So that's why it's in front of you right now, so that we can go into these, you know, like I said, primarily. I, I haven't done anything in the 13-plus years that I've been here, until this came about, and this lady said, well, you need to have some board minutes that show that you are able to enter into contractual agreements. So we're now set.
So then you have to do this every year?
If you approve it. I don't, I don't know. I don't think so. I think once you're set, you're set. But we might put it at a part of our general January election, or January, you know, kind of the, the, the things, and just have it be a, a general part of, of that process. So you might do this again in two months.
Probably a good idea, just for the audit purposes, so that it's documented in our minutes, maybe.
Right. Like I said, this is all new to us on what we were doing, because we thought we were already doing it, but...
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion by Kevin, and a second by Alicia, to authorize Chris Sanju and Michelle Sander as responsible authorities. Uh, roll call vote will be taken. Alicia, will you please help with that?
Jamie?
Four.
Kevin?
Four.
Jason?
Four.
John?
Four.
Myself, four. And Donna?
Four.
Thank you, Alicia. Item F, Glencoe Silver Lake Activities Official and Worker Winter Rates for 2019-2020. Action item, enclosure number seven. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the 2019-2020 official and worker winter rates for the Glencoe Silver Lake Activities Department. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is something that we do each year. Um, I think for the association-type officiating, there was a slight increase, um, just, and they set those. Uh, but I believe the, the, the amount that we set for our officials that are refereeing our games, uh, have, they did not increase.
Is it spring, fall, or just once a year?
I think it's just, th, this is the time that they do it, and I think it's primarily because of some of those association contracts.
We've done ones, kind of in the past, too, with some that sometimes the auditors look for, and say, how do you know what board is approved, and you're, you're, you know, not so much officials, because like Chris said, those are set by association, but for our own...
And then we've done it for community ed, um, with regard to like lifeguards and stuff like that, too, each year.
Yeah, it, very similar to what we're doing right now.
Yeah. Right. And we usually do it to, um, kind of mirror, uh, the city of Glencoe, or the city of Silver Lake, and what they do with their lifeguards. Four wages. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion by Jason, and a second by Kevin, to approve the 2019-2020 official and winter worker rates. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item G, approval of overload for English as a second language ESL teacher. Action item. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving an overload for ESL teacher Sarah Beckman for the second trimester of the 2019-2020 school year. With her current schedule, she is unable to meet the needs of her ESL students, and assist with their academic success while at GSL. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
As you know, um, we, we talked about trying to eliminate overloads, and that will continue to be the goal that we have here. Um, but unfortunately, we're bringing this in front of you, because the classes is just, there's a lot of kids in the classroom. I think there's 19 or 20 students that are in the ESL classroom, and they range from seventh graders to, to senior high kids, with all different abilities. Uh, and, and to us to do the service that, um, I think we need to do, we need to have that class split up. That class being split up, because of her current schedule, that's basically eliminating her study, study hall into an academic, um, hour, and, uh, that falls under the category of the contract of sixth-hour pay. Here we are. Please know, we are due diligent with all the efforts on this, um, and because it's in front of you, I support it. Um, even though we, we did a lot of groundwork on this. And just so that you guys know, not that it's on this, on this, but we've had a lot of conversation about special education lately, on where things are at, and the needs that are continuing to increase. We're going to continue to look outside the box, to give the support that the kids need. But unfortunately, a lot of times, the support is personnel. And, uh, you might even see some more things coming your way here in the next, uh, month or two. But we're going to keep working. But I do recommend this, uh, support, um, for Sarah in, in the high school ESL program.
Can we expect to see an overload for third trimester for this as well? Because this overload, or, or the amount of students, I'm assuming, aren't going to go anyplace. So what level of support will they need in the third trimester as well?
The answer to that is, you're right, and the answer is yes. But if you remember, we're doing overloads one try at a time. And that's what, so I would assume sometime in February is when we'll probably see this again, if everything stays status quo. But we're making sure that we just do things one try at a time so that we don't get ahead, because there potentially are changes in things and, you know, try not to get ahead of ourself. There may be students that go during that time, or something else may come up. But, but good point on that this will probably be brought up again in third try.
And I appreciate it, taking it in kind of bite chunks, you know, bite-sized chunks, because like you said, a lot can happen. But it is also for us as a board to be aware that this could be on the radar for coming up again third trimester as an overload if things stay status quo.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
One of the things with ESL, some of the population is migrant, and that's one of the things that Superintendent Sanju, myself, and Sarah looked at through try one is, where are we going to be in November? The numbers fluctuate quite a bit more in ESL than they do anywhere else. And the families that are migrant typically tend to be moving either in the fall or the spring. So that's another reason for the one try overload. Two is, I'm not entirely sure what it's going to look like in March when we come to sit and talk again. But right now, the numbers would, would be indicative of splitting it like Superintendent Sanju had said, to meet the needs of those kids. And I could speak pretty passionately for a long time about this, and I think Chris would be the first one to tell you, yeah, he could, that there are just a vast amount of needs when you start looking at 7, 12 kids that range from completely non-English speaking to pretty fluent English speaking. And they're all in the same classroom and trying to instruct them ages, basically 12 through 18. It's not a job that I think I would be able to do, and it's, I think it would be extremely difficult for anybody to do. And that's, that's why we're sitting here today.
How is this looking at the elementary level then, I guess is one question, and then another question, maybe a follow-up, first of all, would be, are we able to track any trends as far as migrant population being either more or less migrant? I mean, I thought a while back when we were looking at numbers, we were seeing less migrant and more people actually staying within our school system. So are we able to track or see any trends one way or the other is my follow-up first question. And then my second one would be, how does this look in the elementary for either ESL caseload or meeting the needs proactively early before getting to the secondary?
So I'll kind of try and answer the best I can to both questions here. I think what you're saying as far as the trend of migrant families staying is correct, and that's why we're starting to see more and more of a need of this. Because what, what used to happen is we would have a fairly large number of ESL students in the fall, and three weeks in, many of them would have moved on, and therefore, the cat, the course numbers or the numbers in that class would be manageable for Sarah. I can't speak to caseload numbers at Bill's level in K6, but I know one of the things that we looked at even to alleviate this conversation right here of an overload was potentially having the ESL instructor at the K2 setting come up and teach an hour at the junior, senior high school. And with testing and how that works and the timeframe of where it is and what they speculate for who's going to be coming on here in about two weeks, it just wasn't going to work to have that hour carved out of Sarah Swanland is the ESL instructor at the K2 setting to come up and work at the junior, senior high school. So what we would have had is probably two weeks of something where we could have had her come up, and then it wouldn't have been able to anymore due to numbers. And then that creates a whole nother mess because then you've split them up. Those students have had a teacher for two weeks that now they're going to go back to the original one they had. So again, if any of you want to have more of a conversation on this, this has been something that I've talked to Chris about since probably August. I've talked to Chris, and we've looked at it from every angle possible of what can we do to efficiently use the dollars that we have at the district. And fortunately or unfortunately, however that's viewed, I think this is where we're left with, if we're going to meet the needs of these learners, this is what we need to do. We have a really good process, and not only as the process with these as they go on, but the school planning process that we do every spring. The principal's job is to look out for their staff. And Michelle and I sometimes are the filter that continue to have them look the other way or look at other alternative ways. And, you know, eventually we arrive at the decisions. And I just hope that you guys know that these don't come to you without an extensive process, which is, you know, our job to do. And, you know, obviously, we take this seriously because of the fact that as we looked at things last spring, one of the things that we presented you was no overloads. And here I'm presenting an overload. So which is why we're giving you the information that we're giving you here tonight.
Are many of these secondary students, have they gone through our elementary? Or are they, as a family, entering into our programming as secondary students, having not gone through our elementary? Do you know? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just kind of wondering.
I can't give you exact numbers, but what I can tell you is both.
All of the above.
Some, some of the students are coming in that have been ESL from elementary, and then some are families that come in and they're newly tested. And I know Sarah's not here tonight, but the way that they do that is, when a new, new student moves into the district, they're given a questionnaire about home language survey, and pending what they answer on that, they're tested for ESL. And there's, there's been a pretty big influx last year and this year of students that need to be tested. And I'll be honest with you, last August, when I first came in on year one, I had this conversation with Sarah Beckman of, you know, is the need there? And it probably was last year, too. And I worked with her, and we kind of came up with some things to, let's see where the year goes, let's see where the year goes. And where we are at numbers-wise is less than we are this year by probably five or six students. And I don't know what I see happening next year or the year after. But it's kind of like special ed and the fact that once a student is qualified, you don't see it, a lot of them exit. That's, that's always the goal. But reality just says that doesn't always happen. So, you know, this, I think, is probably going to be a bigger conversation come spring, as far as what are we going to do to be proactive, like you had said, Jamie, to meet these needs. But for now, what needs to happen is, there needs to be more instructional time for those kids.
And even if they exit the program, doesn't mean they still don't need help.
They're then, just like special ed, then they're monitored. So then Sarah Beckman then would monitor them for a year. So...
I appreciate the work that you've done as administration, looking at all aspects and different angles, and looking for efficiencies within the, the structure that we've built as far as a building and having the K2 attached to us and looking at that possibility. But also, I appreciate the fact that you ruled it out because it doesn't make sense with regard to the stability of a staff member, as a teacher, being equated to those students for a long period of time, and those relationships are huge for all students, especially ESL students as well. So I appreciate the work and the diligence that you've put into looking at it from all angles. So thank you for that. Any other questions or comments, anybody? And I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Kevin to approve the caseload for ESL teacher for second trimester. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item H, first reading of policies. Action item. It is a recommendation of the policy committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting. 414 mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. 516 student medication. 601 school district curriculum and instructional goals. 604 instructional curriculum. 611 homeschooling. 616 school district system accountability. 618 assessment of student achievement. 624 online learning options. 713 student activity accounting. 721 uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal reserve, or excuse me, federal revenue sources. And 802 disposition of obsolete equipment and material. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second? Okay. Questions or comments? I have a motion by Donna and a second by Kevin to bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Item I, second reading of policies. Action item. The following policies received their first reading at the October 14th school board meeting. It is a recommendation of the policy committee, Directors Lemke and Lockhart, and the superintendent of schools to adopt these following policies that were read at the October 14th meeting. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? I have a motion by Jason and a second by Kevin to bring back the policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. Would that be right? No. I was like, anybody else catching that? So let me see. I have a motion by Jason and a second by Kevin to adopt the policies at this current board meeting, because they were read at October 14th. Okay. So motion by Jason and a second by Kevin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Come on, you guys, wake up and catch those things. I'm sitting here kind of pausing, and I'm thinking, and I'm thinking, I'm like, hmm. Oh, goodness gracious. Okay. Item J, resolution to accept donations. Oh, peanut gallery. Action item. It is a recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to adopt the resolution to accept donations. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Oh my God. Okay. Questions or comments?
I just have a question. $5,000 display boards? They are...
They are the art display boards. So the ones that you saw out in front of Newsies where all those things are, we now are, have, those were the old ones, but... Yeah. Yeah. And so we got new, new ones for that. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Then I have a motion by Alicia and a second by Donna. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. Once again, thank you to each of the organizations and businesses that are listed here on our donation list. It is, once again, very comprehensive, a very good snapshot, once again, of our GSL school district, all corners of it. And you see not only generous dollar amounts, but also wonderful designations of where these dollars and cents are going. So thank you for the support of our district and our students. Miscellaneous. Item K, is there any at this time?
I just have a couple of things. Just mark on your calendar on the January 16th, 17th for the MSBA Leadership Conference. If any of you are interested in attending, let myself or Trish know, which is coming up. And then also, obviously, our first meeting in January is the organizational meeting, which is coming up really quick to start planning on that whole thing. And if there's anything that you need from me on that process, let me know.
Okay, thank you. Adjournment. Action item. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Is there a second? I have a motion by Donna and a second by Alicia to adjourn our meeting at 8:25 p.m. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is carried. We are in adjournment. Good night, everyone.